I stay with me because someone has stayed for me. Um, I've had good teachers who have poured into me during my toughest times at high school and even after high school. So I...
I'm here today.
I'm here today.
I'm here today.
I'm here today.
Are you?
Are you?
Are you?
At DPS, attendance is important. That's why we're challenging all schools to increase and improve their daily attendance. So I ask again, where are you today? Are you?
Are you?
Hello, my name is Marley. And this school is called VHS Monastery School. And the show that you are watching is called...
A kindergarten.
Axe and the Kindergarten. Okay, so what's your name?
Ashad.
What's your name?
Miriam.
What's your name?
Dutton.
Dutton?
Yes.
So, what's your favorite animal, Ashad?
Lion.
What's your favorite, um, animal, Miriam?
I like elephants.
What's your favorite animal?
A lion.
What's your, what's your favorite cartoon, Ashad?
Cartoon?
Yes. Alright, let's move on. What's your favorite cartoon? Spiderman. Hey, why are you...
Super Kiddies.
Super Kiddies. I like that.
That's rude.
What's your favorite?
Spiderman.
Alright. What's your favorite comic book? What's your favorite cartoon?
I mean book.
Spiderman. What's your favorite comic book?
Not a show.
Okay. Comic book?
No, I think that one.
Alright, what's your favorite comic book?
I don't have one.
What's your favorite comic book?
I have...
And that's perfectly fine, Miriam.
I have...
That's perfectly fine.
I have a dinosaur one.
Dinosaur?
That's not a comic book. I don't have one.
You don't like dinosaurs. Where's your hand?
Oh, I don't have one.
What's your favorite book if you don't have a comic book?
A, a comic book?
No, it's a book, like those, not a comic book.
Not a book.
Okay.
A Spiderman one.
What's your favorite book?
Are you scared? No, I, no, you're scared.
Is that the one that's right there?
No, that's that one right there with the bunny and the bear.
Oh, that's my favorite.
That's my favorite.
Okay, let's go outside everybody. So let's, let's move on. What's your favorite book?
Uh, dinosaur.
Why does it always have to be dinosaurs?
Because I like dinosaurs.
What's your favorite food?
No. No, not real.
No. I'm first.
No, you're not. I get to choose too first. I know you ain't messing up back for me, lady. Oh. I will call you old man if you don't stop calling me old lady. Did you just call me old man?
So, okay, let's move on. What's your favorite movie?
Um... Spiderman.
What's your favorite movie?
Dinosaur.
Why do we always have dinosaurs?
It's a movie.
Wait, there's nothing...
Because I like dinosaurs.
That's a cartoon.
Because I like dinosaurs.
Dinosaur's is not a movie.
Yes, it is.
No, it isn't.
Let's move on.
Okay, I'm running downstairs. Thanks for watching Axe and the Kindergarten. Make sure you subscribe.
So today, we're having an all-city arts festival. And we have lots of music today. We have combined all of our schools together to make music performances all day today. We have choirs, we have bands, we have orchestras. And we're all here to celebrate music in Dayton Public Schools. A lot of these students come from schools where maybe their ensemble, their band, or their choir is really, really small. And so, it's scary to come out and perform in front of people anyway. And especially when you're used to just a little, small group in your classroom, but they've been doing a great job. I think it's a great experience for them because we all know as adults that we have to go and do some things that maybe aren't in our comfort zones. But with this group of people, their peers, they feel a little bit safer. And hopefully, after this experience, it'll kind of feed a fire and they'll want to do it more and more.
Really, music can tap into that creativity that a lot of kids just naturally have, but seems to dissipate often as they get older. So we're tapping into that creativity, giving them that self-expression. So for a lot of our kids, this is their first opportunity to get up in front of people, especially in a venue this big, seeing that big smiles on their faces, especially at the end when they're coming off the stage, excitement. And you know, this is a good opportunity for them to perform and show off for their families, their teachers, their classmates, and greater Dayton community. I think Dayton Public Schools has a huge amount of talent in our district, and we're happy to be here showing that off today.
We hear you, Belmont.
We hear your commitment to learning, and we're here to extend the challenge. That's why we're asking every student, family, and staff member to be present and be engaged.
When we show up, we build a foundation here. And when we show up, we build a future.
I'm here today.
I'm here today.
I'm here today.
I'm here today.
We are here today.
We believe in the power of showing up.
So we're here today. Are you?
Are you?
Side ears right next to them. DBs right here next to them. Hey, everybody understand that.
Let's go.
Get the work, get the work. Hey, hey, get the break.
Hold on, y'all, go to work.
Hey, hard work on three.
Hard work for me, hard work for three, one, two, three. Hard work.
Alright, hey, get out of here, let's get out of here.
This is our first-ever DPS Cares Health and Wellness Fair. We have vendors from a lot of local agencies here. This event offers outreach for our families. We are trying to hook them up with different services in our community. We wanted to make sure parents got messages about wellness, so we were able to bring our guest speakers in. We wanted to make sure that they had access to some of the great things like the yoga and chair massages. And we definitely want to feed everyone when they come out. We just want to show them how much Dayton Public loves them, loves their children, and cares about them and their health and their welfare. I think they're going to take home that it is okay to take care of yourself, and we have to take care of ourselves before we can take care of others. Ways that they can take care of themselves and ways that they can take care of their families. Everyone's saying how wonderful this has been. The kids are having a ball, their faces are painted, they have great prizes, they're getting lots of good information. We have massage therapists come in. I've had multiple people say, "I got a chair massage and I feel so good right now."
...in the last academic year. First, ABEL sees the district's challenges related to transportation. We recently advocated at the State House for more transportation funding in the Ohio budget. State transportation policy and funding contribute to our clients' challenges. We recognize that. You ask to do too much with too little, but funding aside, there are some policies that the district could put together to support our clients. Our clients who were bust with DPS last year had seen frequently late buses or noticed that it wouldn't come at all. This creates worry about attendance and truancy issues, loss of learning if they're missing early morning classes, and in some cases, financial costs where parents have been leaving to pick up their children from work and losing those hours, and hiring a car to get their children to school on time, paying more than $20 each way sometimes. So these are some of the things we see, and this is for parents to make sure they can get their kid to and from school. We also have multiple parents who have alleged problems with how their young children were treated, sometimes five- and six-year-olds on the bus, unkind words for young children by bus drivers, impatience for students with disabilities, and five- or six-year-olds left at the wrong stop. So when our clients allege these things, our steps are to investigate, right? We try to find out if these allegations and issues are true, or we ask the district to. In at least two cases, our requests haven't gotten response. In February of this year, we know DPS passed an important policy prohibiting insults against students and requiring respect, empathy, and professionalism towards students. It applies to any personnel that interact with them. So this policy needs to be enforced meaningfully. It requires an investigation. It requires a written report.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. And it requires that those records are retained. When I have requested these records, they've been hard to come by. From this, we urge DPS to change some policies in practice to better support Dayton families, create a clear internal policy about video retention within the district, regularly train all employees that interface with families on records law, and make sure those records are turned over timely and consistently.
That's 3 minutes.
Thank you. Could I just finish this one?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Review your training curriculum for drivers to make sure that they can better support students with disabilities and all students. I understand that there is state laws that require education around students with disabilities, and we have no reason to believe that the district isn't necessarily putting those in place, but we want to make sure that they have the strength necessary. And lastly, drop clear timeline policies for those investigations I alluded to earlier so that people know what to expect and they can get those responses before the school year runs out, which is what we ran into this year. Again, this information that I'm sharing with you today, these client stories, is to improve the experience for all students at DPS and in Dayton. So thank you for your attention and time today. Again, sorry about the mix-up. I know you have a hard job, but keep it up. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. And if you stop right there to the right, you'll see Dr. Jones, and I'm just going to ask him to follow up with you, please. Thank you. Do we have any anyone else, or that was third down on there? Correct. Madam Treasurer?
I didn't get any.
Okay. All right. So we will move on now to superintendent's recommendations.
Thank you. I recommend the approval of the following: B administrative, C certified, D classified, D classified exempt, F supplemental, and G athletic supplemental appointments.
Was there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Wick, second by Dr. Bailey. Please turn your mic on, Dr. Bailey. Bring it closer to you. All right. Give you guys a moment to look at everything on the motion. Is there any questions?
B, C, and D?
B, C, D, E, F, G. Any questions on the motion? Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
I would like to have a discussion on...
Is your mic on, Mr. Smith? Just bring it closer to you.
Hello? Everyone?
Yes, sir.
A little closer. Closer. Uh, C10, an executive session. I had a question on placement.
Okay. Are you going to have to vote separately after exec?
Yep.
All right. Anything else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Just clarification on... Where did that just go? T O S A is Teacher on Special Assignment.
Yes.
Can I ask what special about that assignment?
Right.
On C22.
The Teacher on Special Assignment position used to be a teacher leader position that was removed from DEA, and so we're now using the term teacher on special assignment. We're no longer allowed to call them teacher leaders.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote when everything except for C10, which will be after executive session?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Six yeses.
All right, Dr. Lawrence, your next.
I recommend the following consults.
Is there a second? Moved by Mr. Walker. Second by Dr. Bailey. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
No.
Dr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Item H, after DEA after July 10th.
Oh.
No, he said his next recommendation.
No, he said contracts.
Yeah, he is.
He said consultants.
He did say. I'm out of it. So who's the problem here? Is that you? Can we go back?
Hook up the motion. We have to remove the motion.
You move the motion.
I'll remove my motion.
All right.
Let me go back to H.
All right.
Okay. Dr. Goodwin?
Hold on, wait, wait, wait. Back up. Recommendation, Dr. Lawrence.
I recommend the approval of the following contract, not contracts, Human Resources DEA after 10th.
Move by Mr. Walker?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wick. Any questions on the motion?
Yes.
Seeing none, may we have a vote?
Yep.
Go ahead, Ms. Reiner.
So my, I think my Wi-Fi in my computer is slow, and I just am waiting for my page to refresh so I can actually see the page, even though I know it's there. And it is there now, but I was, it's good.
Okay. Anybody, you had a question, Mr. Smith?
I don't know. Somebody said...
Okay.
I did have a question.
Go ahead.
Says DEA after July 10th. So is it after July 10th when they submit the resignation, or if they're leaving after July 10th then?
In her case, she submitted it before July 10th, but it is dated after July 10th. So therefore, it's after July 10th.
Okay. Would this be a, would this still be a mark although it's before that July 10th date?
Yes, because of the date of the resignation. So she's going to remain on our books, and then essentially, she's resigning in August. She needs to resign now in order to not be affected by the July 10th, or before July 10th.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
So you're saying her resignation date on what was submitted is to resign after July 10th?
Correct, which is the date that should be listed on there.
Any other questions? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
No.
Dr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Reiner?
No.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
No.
Five no, one yes.
All right, Dr. Lawrence, your next recommendation now.
Here we go. I recommend the following, approval of the following consults.
There a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Walker, second by Dr. Bailey. Any questions on the motion?
One second. My first.
Dr. Jones, can we have someone look into the Wi-Fi situation? Because if the seven of us are having issues, I can only imagine with the people who actually work in the building.
It's the ghost.
Thank you. All right. Any questions on the two consultants? Up for the vote?
I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Uh, somebody give me some information on the parent cafe training for the parent ambassadors. If you're here, a little more about that.
Sure, no problem at all. We, as part of our Title I Parent Engagement, we have to do that per the federal government, and they have to be trained as well. We can't just have them in the school without unified training. So part of that training is on how to interact with students, how to interact with our Title I supplies, and how to give out supplies that are also aligned with our OST data, OST.
Okay. Will that be a one-time thing, ongoing? How did that training look?
Uh, this training is ongoing. It should be every year, so this should be reoccurring.
No, not recurring every year. I mean, during the year. Is it once per year, or is it as needed? What does it look like in the calendar?
It's part of the parent cafe training meeting. So in that meeting, there's a training section, and they meet once a month.
Okay. Cool, cool. I'd love to hear more about it in the upcoming meetings.
No problem.
See how it's going. Appreciate it.
President Goodwin?
Go ahead, Ms. Wick.
How does one become an ambassador, a parent, in a cafeteria?
Typically, that's building level. The principal selects them, but there are parents who are really active, and they select themselves.
So you parents out there that are listening, if you want to volunteer in your schools, take advantage of this parent cafe training. That's exciting space. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Dr. Lawrence, your next recommendation?
I recommend approval of the following contracts.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Walker, second by Ms. Wick. Any questions on the contracts?
I do have one. Uh, Dr. Lawrence, can I ask you some information on the Boonshop School of Medicine MOU?
Take flight, which is started by Sherri Gale, is now with the House of Bread. Essentially, we have that at two schools, Belmont and Thurgood, and we provide experiences for them, work experiences in terms of what they can see in the future. And so we have an official MOU with them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Um, I had one brought up outside of the key behavioral services, LLC. What are some of the main goals that we want to see with that contract? I don't know.
Uh, let's see. That'd be like an OEC. That's a no. Well, I can tell you, as we talked about that, I wrote it and sent it back to the board, but essentially, this is support for Jackson Center, not primarily, but support for Jackson Center and the students that will be sitting there so that we can work on alternative behaviors. If you remember, we're sending, we have students there who are homeschooled, we have students there who are also students who are going to be suspended, as we mentioned before, and students that we identify who need to be tested. So the key behavior will be over there providing supports so that we don't have to have all of OEC over there. And it's also a contract that we do right now, the beginning of the year, because it's district-wide as well.
All right. And follow up about what is the staffing level that it looks like through key behavior?
Uh, I have to get back with you. I talked to Ms. Denzmore about the staffing level, because she's part of the Jackson Center team. Actually, we're still working on the staffing levels right now for, we don't have a name for it yet, but we're calling it Jackson Center instead of Alternative School. So I have to get back with you on those FTEs for the whole building, actually.
And lastly, with that, does that mean, depending on what our staffing level or the capacity that we're looking to have, do you expect or do you feel that it could happen that that not to exceed your increase?
I do. And thanks for asking that, Board Member. If I do think it can increase, given the work that we think we're going to be doing there, because like I said, as district-wide, with Jackson Center as a primary focus, but we don't want to short the rest of the district. So thanks for asking that in public today, just in case we have to come back.
Any change to that?
Any other questions? Go ahead, Ms. Wick.
Thank you. On the, not necessarily question, but on the East End Community Services and summer programming, could we please get an update on what is still available? I know recently, we just saw the athletic camps that are coming out, and when our PIO pushes that information out, it's really valuable to our families. I know that people are looking to keep their kids engaged this summer or looking for opportunities. So what is left yet in July? Just kind of get our PIO team on that? And only know that because I've been looking for like Esmeralda and stuff. So anyway, I say that because it's helpful. Thank you. That's all.
No problem. I'll make a note of that.
Any other questions?
Um, yes, maybe.
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
All right. So this kind of goes inside of some of the behavioral services that we're looking at because of the life of Jackson Center opening, Dr. Lawrence.
Yeah.
Um, while we will definitely be having students over at Jackson Center, I don't want us to then overlook, especially at our younger levels, our teachers and getting the assistance needed with some of the behavioral issues that we see at a young age, some of the issues that they face, which to me goes directly handed down to teacher attention too, as well as just that morale in our buildings. How are we going to be leveraging some of these contracts that are, you're saying, working with Jackson? How are we going to ensure that we're still providing our teachers in the rest of our buildings assistance with the issues that they may have, which affect classroom management, affect their day-to-day, affect their well-being and being here, be it through a contract, through some of the work we're trying to do, PBE? Just what's your mindset on that, to be fair?
Hey, thanks for asking. So the Principal's Institute is July the 15th, that week of, and we need to, we need to do a better job. I thought we got better, but we need to do better of providing access to those services. So the first response can't be suspension. So we need to work more with some air to be able to help academics. We need to implement our PBI's practices more. We have additional support, BCBA's, Board Certified Behavioral Analysts who work in OEC. We need to really deepen that framework and with fidelity and provide those supports that you're talking about, because it's not just the 712. I mean, we have, we have issues with students in pre-K through 6 as well, and it's best to identify and solve them first there so they don't exacerbate themselves at the secondary level. So thank you for the question. We are going to make sure that we emphasize and focus on that in K6. 712, since you have me talking now, 712 will be around safety and security. We're going to also use those mental health services, but we want to have a really intense focus on making sure those halls are clear this year, no kids are out, they're in class, and that we follow up and make sure we're supporting instruction in those spaces.
A brief follow-up if I may, Madam President.
Go ahead.
All right. So I appreciate you putting that piece out there, knowing that we also have kind of some barriers, you can talk about mental health, regarding some of our younger students. Do we have any plans to work with our parents around the importance of mental health, understanding that in some spaces, you need that parental okay for us to provide some services toward you? I think that would be a good wrapping of the pieces, really understanding the needs of our mental health services. I know there's been a statement that's been there for years and years with just even the idea around mental health. So in your opinion, what are some of the things that we could be doing to, to help with that, knowing that we cannot always just put children in programs? We cannot always give them the resources because we also need the parents to accept those. Some of the things that we're working on in our buildings, just a piece we just talked about with our parent ambassadors, some of the pieces that we have in outreach and engagement, what are some of your thoughts and ideas on how do we get our parents to understand the need for mental health services and the need to addressing these behavioral issues that we see at young age?
So all the components that you mentioned, they're all part of MTSS for the non-educated as just multi-tier systems of support. And what that means is we have individuals coming from the entire building, counselors, the school psych, teachers, intervention specialists, typically administrator, and we, and teachers from that grade level band or that grade if it's self-attained. And the idea is to brainstorm around best practices and our resources and how we put that together in a package, and then bring the parent in and let them know or guardian for who's ever supporting the student, because it's not always the parent, mom, and dad, that, hey, listen, this is not punitive, and it's not kind of calling the student out. It's a process, a systematic scientific process where we as a team, we as a family, actually identify these needs. We've used intervention for six weeks. We've not seen a change, and we want to provide further intervention. So explain it to the parents or guardians or family members who help the child in that way.
I appreciate that. I would definitely love to have an update on that, the upcoming months and see how we can get some parents involved and coming to the table, seeing some of the best ways that we can talk to people. Sometimes it might not be us, it might be our students in the community. So I definitely appreciate an update in the next few months on how that's going and just how we can help our families and our community.
No problem.
Appreciate that. So that's all I have, Madam President.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Your next recommendation?
My next recommendation is approval of the following bell schedule.
There a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Wick, second by Dr. Bailey. I have a first question for you on this one. Can you tell us why we are just getting this this week? Why we didn't have this earlier?
Uh, I believe we had one up for viewing, and we took it down by mistake. Could be wrong. And so we made some adjustments, revisions to that one. And it's June, and I actually, to be honest, I asked the staff early this week, and said, hey, this should have been on, so we needed to get it on until the public can see what their bell times are for next year.
And can you tell us just a little bit of the feedback and any changes that occurred to this bell schedule versus last year, just so the general public will know that as well?
Uh, sure. Let's start with the departments who are involved. So if someone from transportation would like to come up and talk about your side and talk about our side.
Well, he's coming. Just first, give us the any changes that have occurred from last year to this year.
Uh, changes to occur, the second tier of the bell schedule is, the eight to three is much heavier, and the first tier is much lighter. Now, let transportation kind of, where's it going? Oh, he sure did.
He walked fast as quick as he could.
Dr. Jones, you want to talk about transportation, piece on that?
That's hilarious. Oh, he came back.
Now, he's going back.
I don't think he was coming up to talk to us.
Oh, maybe he wasn't. I see he got his head, or maybe he wasn't listening.
Sorry, my wife called. It sounded like I asked a question.
Hey, the wife takes presidents over.
Hey, the wife called, made you move.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Yeah, no, my wife and my mom called. I'll run out real quick. I'm sorry about that. So we actually requested that Walkman be moved to the first tier, just to kind of one that used to ride with Louis Troy anyway. Some of those students actually were with their older siblings and vice versa. So it kind of helped to alleviate some of the disciplinary problems on the, on the bus. But also going towards efficiency. We're looking at, this year, we had about 16 vehicles going between both schools that are about a mile apart from each other. The amount of students we had between both schools could have been done with about eight vehicles. So we're looking at an efficiency standpoint, trying to cut down in certain places so that we can have buses going to other places.
And then on our end, on the academic end, all those folks are on cabinet, Judy Spurlock, Michelle Sherris, I think Ms. Dooley was on some of it, because of our students who were going to college, going to St. Clair at eight o'clock in the morning. We gave some feedback on athletics, and with time we wanted kids to get up, we gave some feedback on how full buses were and weren't. We gave some feedback on academics. There was really flexibility going back and forth for transportation. There are some things that are efficient that may not match up with best practices and academic research, and what time kids should get up and go to school. And so we were able to kind of bend and move back and forth in a flexible manner through cabinet and through other special meetings that they had where our academics went out to the service center and helping develop the schedule.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey.
Yeah, I just, and maybe you answered it, I'm not sure, but I see that Belmont Middle and Belmont High are on tier two, but then when you got Stivers, high school was on tier two, Stivers Middle was on tier three. Why did they?
So many of the high schools and middle schools are where they're at, just based upon sports, schedules, and things of that nature. So that's, for a perfect example, that's the reason why we brought Rivers Edge and Charity Adams to the middle tier so that they were actually able to participate in some of those sports and get to some of the events that they need to get to. Stivers, I believe, I'm not, we can get it right now. One of the Stivers actually gets out at four o'clock.
Middle.
Yeah, the middle does.
Stivers Middle actually gets out at four o'clock. That was one that I really can't say that we addressed too, in too much depth at the time, but in reality, we realized that there are issues to having every school eight to three. In reality, when we have every school eight to three, and they've been used to going at four o'clock already, it just leaves a little room. It gives us very little room to actually get routes covered and taken care of. Thank you.
Thanks for mentioning that, Mr. Callen. We will not, you know, we're waving the flag now. This will not make every teacher, administrator, parent happy. It's impossible, given the sheer volume and scale of what we have to do here and the number of variables. I think this is the closest approximation to efficiency and academic empirical research that we can get to.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
So to clarify, after looking at the one from last year compared to this year, Charity and Rivers Edge moved from tier three till tier two, and Stivers moved to tier one. So that was the only change that was made to this from last year. So can I ask?
Stivers didn't move to tier.
It's not Stivers, Walkman. So Walkman moved to tier one, Charity Adams and Rivers Edge moved from three to two for this year. So those were the only three changes that was made. We did have this up for our first retreat, but we did not discuss it then, and I think even then, I had asked the question, we don't transport a high school, but all six of our high school students are at the hub at the same time. So can I ask why nothing changed with those?
I'll let transportation speak to the middle schools.
I'm just looking at high school.
Uh, the height, wait, you started off with middle school, and then I, so I thought you were asking two. you were asking two.
No, no, I was, I was looking at what changed from last year to this year.
We have about thirty-nine hundred kids in high school, uh, I forget the exact number that are involved in CCP. Uh, Ms. Dooley, um, and St. Clair have worked for, uh, months, uh, actually Dr. Gail started to work before she left to create a schedule, uh, for some of our best and brightest to be able to attend St. Clair in the morning and then come back and, uh, finish the rest of their day. And so, that's how high school schedules were built. We start with honors gifted CCP and we move from there. So, we have a memorandum of understanding with them. They have schedules as well at St. Clair in terms of their professors, uh, their adjuncts and when they teach. And so, uh, those parts moving back and forth between what we're doing and what they're doing, this is what we settle on after months of work.
So, so nothing from high school changed?
I'm sorry?
Nothing from high school changed, and I get the CCP, if they're attending in the morning, so we have a tier that starts at seven AM, but no high school is on that tier. College classes start at eight o'clock, high school is starting at eight o'clock, so they're still missing that morning instruction if they're doing CCP. So, there's no high school that's on the seven o'clock timeframe to even get that morning instruction part.
No, they're not, because they go to, they're at eight o'clock, they go straight to St. Clair.
Okay, so, again, that brings me back to my question, why didn't we put any high schools on the seven o'clock instead of eight o'clock?
Uh, high schools also, in addition to the other things I mentioned to you about coursework, uh, there is athletics for all of high schools as well. So, they're all out at the same time because they oftentimes compete against each other and/or travel somewhere else. So, these are, again, all normal things that happen in districts in terms of how you, how you're working through high school scheduling.
If I could just ask one question on this topic? I've had feedback from some of the teachers at the high school level, just, it doesn't represent all, but some of them asking why, why can't these students go an hour a day? Even though in like the philosophy you just said of that, starting at eight, they're being able to be there at seven. We just think that a little bit, kind of thought process about why that wasn't, or where to move.
Sure, um, many of our students, actually you and I mentioned this earlier, and one of the things we do as cabinet is we mimic the student's life and we get on the bus and ride the bus there. So, some of them start that bus ride as early as five-thirty, uh, to get to school at eight o'clock. Uh, you add another hour to that, um, and you can, I'll let you do the, not you personally, but publicly do the math in terms of what time they're getting up to go to school.
Okay, so that would be the only part, just the, the, um, the assumption of individuals, some will have to wake up and the reality for some, if they would have to get up at five-thirty, let's say five-thirty-ish, to get to school.
Even earlier. And, 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 and for us also, uh, we have seven high schools, um, and which six are comprehensive. And there's one where the cars are down the street and wrapped around the corner, so seven o'clock would be okay for that one school. That is not the case in the other lots here. When you look in these other parking lots, there's three, five, seven cars max in which kids have driven themselves and there's no line wrapped around the school in the morning. So, um, I see it as an equity issue as well.
In the future, is it, is it possible, since you said there's one, is it possible to start, like thinking about testing these concepts to see if our assumptions do match that piece of, not necessarily now, but this June, but looking forward of putting that out, let's, let's actually have those conversations with individuals and then actually see if we do see that individuals, that does work better, are works for us.
Uh, I would be glad to add that to the, um, school programming and curriculum committee. I think what we call it in school, this is a zero period, uh, so seeing that as a, how a zero period works, um, as a pilot, they used to have a zero period here at, at, um, Stivers for certain classes, like Latin, French, I can't remember the other ones, it's been ten, ten years or more since I was here. But that concept does exist and no, I would have no problem with that at all.
And I would say too, even what we saw two years ago with study tables with some of the schools who were offering it in the, that earlier slot, they actually had really good participation. So, even some of the data points, even though they're small, we have seen that kids do come at a good amount at that time, so it may, it's just an opportunity there to actually flesh out and let's pick some schools, let's look at those, those pieces, and even if we do some soft tests this year, with, again, could utilize either the study table or some other programming that occurs a little bit earlier to see if kids do come to school earlier, even if breakfast started as early as seven o'clock. I mean, just some, there, there's some opportunity for us to get beyond just our assumptions and see how kids get to school when these things are available at those points. Go ahead, Mr. Walker.
Yeah, and I, I think for me, if I'm looking at, just far as, since we do not transport high school students, um, a separate tier just for those high schools, maybe a seven, two start at seven-thirty, two start at eight, two start at eight-thirty or something like that. I don't really think that it will have that much of an impact on athletics if students is getting out at three-thirty. Um, a lot of times with athletics as an official, that district adjusts their schedule to accommodate their students, um, and those districts who they are playing know that as well. So, just looking at that piece, um, to really look at high school as its own, I want to say entity with regards to a bell schedule piece.
Uh, thanks for that feedback, you just gave me an idea. I was thinking about it in the school programming, um, and curriculum meeting, but we probably should have some of those members from the school programming curriculum meeting come to the athletic meeting and then those two teams kind of talk about this.
I think that works.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, now we have a vote.
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Six yeses.
All right, that concludes your recommendations. You have some comments?
Uh, I do not have any comments today other than hello to my mother Eva Lawrence.
Looking to Kim, so she can see.
Oh, yeah. I am Eva Lawrence and my Aunt Robinson will see you at convocation.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer, your first recommendation?
That got taken off.
I recommend the approval of the following resolutions. A, permission for Treasurer to utilize single-source, uh, procurement. B, permission to advertise formal solicitation. C, permission to utilize purchasing cooperatives.
Is there a motion? Some have. Is there a second?
Second.
Something happened, Monica Church, oh, please. She did A, B, and C.
Yeah.
All right, any questions on the motion? Seeing none, now we have a vote.
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Six yeses.
All right, your next recommendation?
I recommend the approval of monthly financial for May, as reviewed last week.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Walker, second by Ms. Wick. Are there any questions on the motion?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Dr. Lawrence, um, the Positive School Climate Fund, um, and I'm just really curious on, is, was that affected by ESTER's money because it was not really used on the percentage side, if I'm looking at that monthly financial? It was fourteen percent is what was utilized. Um, what is the plan for PSC this year, or is that not coming out of that fund and it's coming out of title funds or something like that instead?
Yeah, thank you for the question. To answer your question, no, it wasn't affected by ESTER's. When we, sometimes we think in buildings we provide supports that are not necessarily supports, but they're, um, they can become a crutch when we don't have the administrative team, the SRO team, and the team to deal with students every day, um, use PSC, right? We buy these additional supports as if someone else is going to do it, when the people who should be doing it are not fully engaged in it. So, we decided to, um, go in a different direction with some of that money this year. But, we do have, it is on the agenda for our, um, our academic retreat and for the SRO and, um, SRO secondary team meeting, as we talk about safety and security for next year.
Okay, thank you. And then, the last question on the Montessori instructional pair, I'm figuring that is only forty percent utilized because that came out of ESTER's and was taken over by general fund?
Yes.
Uh, yes, yep, yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, now we have a vote.
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Your next recommendation?
I recommend the approval of donations as reviewed last week.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Wick, second by Dr. Bailey. Any questions on the motion? I will say thank you to everyone who continues to donate to us, we definitely appreciate them and more are welcome. Seeing no other que- go ahead, Ms. Reiner?
Okay.
Seeing no other questions, now we have a vote.
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Six yeses. I recommend the approval of purchase requisitions as reviewed last week.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Walker, second by Ms. Wick. Any questions on the motion?
I do, uh, for Mr. Williams. Oh, would ask Dr. Jones, but I figured he's probably going to go up there too. I just want to clarify something. The esports is nothing under athletics, correct? The esports program is that?
No, that is currently all under IT, we're the ones supporting it, supplying the equipment and also the training.
Okay, and then, the PO for the district phones?
Yeah, so that is to upgrade our phone system across the district, it is to actually pull back the phone system from CBTS to give us more control, and it saves us roughly, I think it's two fifty, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year, once we do that.
All right, I appreciate it.
Not a problem.
And then, Dr. Lawrence, um, I did see the book bag. I'm not a fan, just going to tell you, I, I just, I, I don't, um, I would, I would be curious to see, like, principals or the policy or student handbook that goes alignment with that book bag and how to be utilized. I think, um, to me, it looks more like something for probably the middle school. Um, I think for high school, the challenge would be a lot of students carry their athletic things inside of their book bags with their books and things like that. Um, but I just want to make sure that, uh, will students be penalized for not using this book bag, or what would be the process of that going forward? So, if you can look at that in that, um, uh, commit, those committees, appreciate it.
No problem.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I guess I'll go with the bag first. Um, seeing that we do have those situations where we have students that carry a plethora of things to school, um, seeing a high schooler walk out with his fifty-pound book bag and he weighs about seventy-five pounds, do we have alternate options that we're looking at, and we'll be looking at some things, be it duffel bags, different kind of things going down the road with that, or are we squarely set on just one type of bag, Dr. Lawrence?
No, uh, that's just the beginning of the processes of, uh, to talk about the concept of, and the why. Uh, we, um, still have to talk to some students, and so we have our student senate for next year already picked, um, and so we need to talk to them. Uh, we also have the Principals Institute, so there's a breakout session for secondary, we're Chief Wright and Mr. Simmons, that's part of what they'll be talking about then. Um, and I think they've already, uh, polled some of the principals unofficially around what that looks like. So, we still have some work to do.
Okay, and follow up on that?
Sure.
Um, I think the big follow-up too for me is talking to students and parents as well as the why. The pros hearing some of their pushback, I don't want it to be something where, where people are just feeling like they're being thrown something, not understanding the flipside of this is why we're looking to do this. Um, a little piece of privacy, they, you know, our kids go through enough things, um, understanding the levels of poverty in our district, understanding the different socioeconomic, social, emotional, um, issues that go on just in our community. I think it just, to me, would be good to spend a, a heavy amount of time of really talking through this and, and really having conversations about the safety that you all are trying to prioritize, and then also leveraging that with our students' mental well-being, their social well-being, their just day-to-day, um, because that, that is a big thing, even as an adult, that everybody doesn't, I have to pull out right now, everybody had a clear bag, you know, for me to be a pepper mint dinosaur, but you never know what's all, and I mean, those are just things in people's lives, being a parent who has, has had a teenage daughter in school, understanding that there are so many issues and we talked about bullying and, you know, we don't even have to rehash some of the things that have happened in our home district, where we have had students harm themselves over being made fun of about things that they've had on them, from book, the things that are in their book bags, from their clothing, through we've had a situation with an elementary school child that started from teasing around her cycle. Like, these are real things that are happening in our community, and for me, I think I get the, the need for safety, but I also get the need for having that conversation with people and the families so that there isn't just this fear coming into the school here. There's an understanding of, okay, if we're going to massively change this piece of my life, there has to be some understanding of that. Um, so I appreciate that, I do hope that we do that. Um, I'm sorry that Mr. Williams got up, you don't have to get too far back into it, I was trying to catch him before he walked back to the seat, but with this esports thing, I'm trying to wrap my head around, what does the staffing needs look like currently for, for it? Do we have the staffing, what is the capacities that we're looking for?
So, the one they do over at, I believe it's Thurgood right now, they have roughly two teachers that essentially volunteer their time after school because it's something the students wanted. So, what we're trying to do is, we're giving them, it's roughly, I think it's twelve laptops and a portable cart for consoles, um, and then the IT team's going to come over, work the events with them.
Okay, and, following up with that, so, at each school, you're saying it would basically be a volunteer teacher or two, kind of overseeing and managing the upper school club, is that right?
That's the way they're doing it now, and that's how a lot of the schools start out with it.
Right, right. Um, with that, I don't know if that's maybe a Dr. Jones or a Dr. Lawrence, with that, looking into gauging the capacity, looking at some of the issues we've had, say, at the libraries where that's been a huge piece, um, just wanting to keep a, a close eye on it, because I love the idea of it, you love the idea of it, but I also don't want it to turn into something where students are just hanging out and not really getting the, the main gist of what we're trying to do, and getting students to engage in something that brings them closer together with each other, something that is huge, huge in their world, the whole string of the world, something crazy, I do not get it, so I'm old, but not wanting it to turn into some of the things that we've seen where at some of the libraries where they've had to, you know, shut down some of the gaming rooms, and really kind of change some of the things. Uh, have we talked to anybody at the city of Dayton around what they're doing currently? And I know they're trying to do something over Princeton and, and I had talked to them probably, hmm, a couple of months ago, but have we talked to anybody over there and seen kind of what's working, what hasn't been working? I think it's probably more toward Dr. Jones.
Listen, uh, Mr. Smith, let's, let's send this whole piece of it to the Student Activities Committee?
Which you are on.
Which, oh, you are, you're on it, but that way, you guys, like, some of the discussion you're having are things that maybe you guys should be able to hash out in the actual committee to discuss to us with these answers and those type of things.
I think, we cancel, I think we canceled June, but I think, Ms. Karen, it's on for July, I think it's on for July, we didn't do a June meeting.
But in addition to whatever response that you give us today, the ask here is that the Student Activities Committee actually goes a little bit deeper in what this program is and can bring the board back, kind of some solidified plans, um, all those things with, but carry on.
So, uh, I'll let Dr. Jones come up and talk a little more on it, but we already have essentially a list of survey questions that we've worked with other schools on to bring to a committee specifically like that, and they're gauged towards the, the students.
For the sake of brevity, we have had some conversations with, um, staff members at the library, uh, over by Belmont, as well as the one downtown. Uh, they did get to a point where they had to limit, uh, the number of hours, uh, that students engage with these devices. Um, I don't think that we'll have some of the same issues because there are relationships that already exist inside of the buildings, um, but we will definitely, uh, keep a close eye and work with, uh, Dr. Lawrence and his academic team and, you know, the principals just to make sure that, uh, you know, student behavior is at premium.
Appreciate it.
Hey, Board Minister, but I just want to follow up on something you said earlier.
Thank you.
I know you are. You're, you're in schools quite a bit, so you see, uh, you see what happens when, uh, when we're doing intake in the morning, but I don't want, uh, the board or the general public to get caught up on a bag. For us, this is a comprehensive safety space for next year so that we drastically reduce the number of incidents that are happening inside our high schools, uh, that, um, are unbecoming for schools. inside our high schools, uh, that, um, are unbecoming for schools. So this is one piece. Uh, we are not ready downhill for it. Under one thing is that you graduate, that you go to class, follow up on your schoolwork, and we have, um, pathways for you, that we have, um, advanced coursework for you, AP coursework, CCP, um, CTE, that we, that we become a world-class academic institution, that's what's important to us.
Appreciate that. Um, I meant to ask you that, though, when you brought up the bell schedule and the bag, are we looking at reviewing some of just the pickup layouts at some of our buildings?
You are, thank you, you're on fire right now. Yes, all, all of that, all of that is part of the, uh, all that's part of the sa- the safety and security plan, so it's not just a bag, it's, it's a comprehensive space around how you make these, the high schools operational, make them safe, make them efficient. Uh, I got the call from you early in the year about stivers, and, yes, you did, and I, and I, we, we came over and put a plan in place, and then I got a call about opponents, so I, again, those are all parts of it.
Can I add to that? Dr. Goodwin said something earlier. Is it possible for nutrition services in the building to open, like, enough, early enough for students instead of them just standing outside in the front? Like, that's just something you could probably think about and then...
We're already working on that one.
Yeah, we sure are.
That one is, is under works.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The safety plan that Dr. Lawrence is talking about, what is already happening. So hopefully, that will come, uh, with some stuff before in the next month or so.
Okay, and then, last question I have, because I see a lot of stuff on here. Um, Jackson Center, will it be open for the first day of school?
So, in our committee, we just met up, uh, about a week and a half ago, here's the conversation, and we're just trying to flesh it out. Typically, in all s- school districts, there's a, um, there's a quiet period, first couple weeks, everybody's getting to know each other, so it's really quiet. And so it's gonna give us a chance, we're thinking about it, with the high school, again, all the high school, middle school principals are there. Do we need a couple weeks in the beginning of the year to transition, get counselors on board, when all the principals, secondary, all the secondary principals have their class meetings and explain the expectation to students, that, hey, here are our steps of intervention based on PSE, and, hey, here are the possible outcomes and consequences, and one of them could be Jackson Center slash whatever we name it, uh, this could be a possibility. And so we wanna, we don't want to just say, hey, it's day one, there was a, unfortunately, there was a fight, and those two people are not being suspended at home for 10 days, but they're gonna spend 10 days at Jackson St. Center with some of our behavioral health support. Yeah, that's too quick for us. So as we continue to roll this out, we think, right now, today, we think that the first couple weeks should be a transition period for the whole district to prepare for it.
Okay, um, and then to just elaborate on that, mine was more so with operations, will the building be open and running by the first day of school?
Uh, yes, operations is ready to go. I don't have any indication that we won't be ready. I think that, for us, I think we're actually behind operations in terms of staffing. Uh, we still need to have a meeting with the DEA president, because there needs to be, and some, yeah, some possible, uh, wiggle room on his end, because we're past the transfer deadline, so there may be teachers who are, like, internal, that we haven't hired, who want to transfer and go to that space. So we have some internal speed spaces. I think we might even be behind operations. I could be wrong.
What is it? Uh, okay.
Thumbs up.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got one. On, uh, page seven, under Participants, I just want to know what, uh, tuition for out-of-district DPS students with IEPs?
Two million dollars?
So what?
Is that the two million dollars?
It's, uh, 700,000. Is that for, like, charter schools, is that for, what is, what is that?
So that's for any student who is assigned dating public schools as their homeschool, but is sent to another location. It could be Cleveland, it could be Columbus, that we don't either, A, have the capacity, or, or B, um, their IEP is not written in a space that we can service it. So that is pretty common for public school districts. We are actually trying, uh, Ms. Denzmore is trying to bring back a section of those students and see if we can service them at Jackson Center to be able to save that money, but that's a long, that's a process, not long-term. We're just working on it now. So we outsource millions, um, in special education. Gardendale used to be our, our school within the house, meaning the students that we now send out, uh, for services, and Gardendale, of course, does not exist as a school.
All right, thank you. I ju- I just looked at that, because, you know, we seem to be giving a lot of money to a lot of other school systems when they're not here, but, okay, thank you.
Can I, can I ask, does this have to come out of general fund? If it's dealing with special needs students, like, do those federal dollars not cover those two?
Yes, it has to come out of Title I, we can't use Title VI.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Um, probably not to get into it far into it, I think maybe for Jones or, uh, Dr. Lawrence, with Jackson Center, have you guys fleshed out what transportation looks like at that space? Um, will it be a, a different model than the rest of our schools would consider?
Uh, Dr. Vincent Taylor was at the last meeting, and yes, we're, uh, close to finishing fleshing it out. Uh, Ms. Stevens, Ms. Christian, actually, not Stevens, I've known her a long time, Ms. Christian, who's the new principal, has met with LWC, which are architects, to map out, um, what is the best way for the, to, for the buses to come in and drop off based on the student body population, based on how many kids we think we're gonna have, based on whether or not we think we're gonna have outdoor recess equipment there, or lots of variables that she's already gone through with LWC and operations about when the buses come for, um, for instance. Um, the other piece around, uh, how often, what time, how we get there, we're still fleshing through some of that, uh, with some of the principals and operations. And operations, if I miss anything, please, jump right in.
All right, if I can, can I narrow that scope down to this question? With a student, if I'm a ninth grader, 10th grader, I am now over at Jackson, would I be catching an RTA? Me, that creates a myriad of other issues, if you're saying, I'm at this space in lieu of being either expelled or suspended for fighting, would I be downtown catching an RTA bus to Jackson Center? That, to me, we're just looking to have more hairlines, and I can ima- imagine what that looks like. If we put a kid out of a school for fighting, and they go to the hub and fight them. So that is what I'm also thinking, I'm talking about. What is the transportation model for students that would be in that space?
Uh, typically, what happens for, uh, students that receive an in lieu of expulsion assignment, uh, or if it's a suspension, the parents are responsible for making sure that that child gets, uh, to school and home. Uh, and we have had some preliminary discussions, we have not finalized, uh, that very thing just yet, but, uh, I am leaning towards, uh, making the recommendation that parents be responsible for those, for their children, uh, getting back and forth, if they're on an in lieu of expulsion. For those students that are, um, just seeking an alternative placement, then that, that's a different story.
Right, and that, that's, I appreciate that, Dr. Jones, because that was, that is my thought of, making sure that it's just not a blanket coverage at that space when we talk about transportation. Um, then secondly, understanding just some of the dynamics we have in our community. I can imagine a situation where a child is in a situation where the, and we wouldn't be under, the parent has to get them there, but then they fall into that bucket of children that we see every day in our community that do not have any parental guidance or parental assistance, or are one of eight to 10 children out of group home. Like, I just want us to make sure that as we're creating this space, that we're not leaving these, these thoughts behind, and understanding that part of the reason for us to create this space is not to have a dumping ground, but to understand that there are situations that require more assistance than they could probably get at their building, but then how do we not create more problems? So I appreciate you bringing that up, and I definitely want to get with you and, uh, kind of follow what we're looking at that. I definitely appreciate looking at some of the other alternatives that we see around the state, uh, to serve the same facts. Appreciate that. Thank you, Madam President, that's all I have.
Uh, Board Member Smith, I want to ask, uh, Madam President, if she'll give us an opportunity to present, uh, what we have at the review session, no, business meeting in July. Uh, and also, again, I'm glad you went down this, this kind of line of questioning. We also hypothesized that if you're a parent, you have a student who is in lieu of suspension, meaning they've, they've committed an infraction, it means you're gonna be suspended for five or 10 days. Uh, we have confidence or faith that the parents, by and large, would bring their kids to Jackson Center for us to continue to do schoolwork on Apex, uh, some of our virtual bots that we're gonna be using to continue to have live teaching, to continue to be in school, um, versus being at home. We think that most parents, we believe, don't want their kids at home on suspension, and if they were bringing them.
Thank you. Any other questions? And Ms. Keat or Ms. Garrett, can you put that presentation on for us for the next one?
All right, seeing no other questions, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote on purchase requisitions?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Your next recommendation?
I recommend the approval of the following, then and now, as reviewed last week.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Walker, second by Dr. Bailey. Any questions on the motion? Seeing nothing, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Please refresh the screens if you haven't. I believe that was your last recommendation. Do you have any comments tonight, Madam Treasurer?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Uh, this month, I share two very good news about the, this, our district's financial health, accountability, and transparency. Auditor of State of Ohio developed a system that measures how schools in Ohio are doing financially. The new system analyzes 17 financial indicators for every district. Out of 17 indicators, we received 16 green, which is a good financial state, one yellow, which means to pay attention to that. This is a very, very good, uh, recognition. Another one is, we also received four stars out of four stars from Auditor of State of Ohio, which is the highest achievement in the open and transparent government. The other one is, this couldn't be happened without the hardworking of the treasurer's team, support of the board, and district. Thank you, my team, as always. The other one I have is, for our teachers and students, I wish them a very great summer, and, uh, they come back refreshed and to study and to teach. Thank you.
Congratulations, Treasury, on receiving those awards. You guys are doing a phenomenal job on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hamilton, your recommendation?
Uh, good afternoon, or evening, I guess. Um, this is the same resolution as we discussed last week. This is the resolution to, uh, hire a staff coordinator for the Internal Audit Department. This resolution would, um, essentially be an amendment or a change to the resolution, uh, or is in response to the resolution made by the board on April 26th, 2025.
So move.
I'm gonna say, just say, I recommend.
Oh, uh, I have to read it.
So I recommend the approval of...
I recommend the approval of the following, uh, resolution.
Thank you.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Walker, second by Dr. Bailey. Any questions on the motion? Seeing nothing, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you. Ms. Hamilton, do you have any comments to that? All right, Dr. Jones, your recommendations?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I recommend ratification of the following contracts.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Walker, second by Dr. Bailey. Any questions on the motion?
Can I ask about the Dunbar Pee Wee? That's on his contracts?
Yes, uh, I'm gonna ask Chief Jones to come up and talk a little bit about Dunbar Pee Wee.
Good evening. Um, we're excited about this potential partnership. This is the Dunbar Pee Wee. We wanted to, um, have a partnership with, um, the Dunbar Pee Wee. It's actually in conjunctions with our high school, so, um, Darren Powell and his staff, they are collaborating with them as well. It will target our elementary and some of our middle school. We think this is important for development, so when they get to the high school level, they have some skills already developed and relationship building with our current staff and our community, so, um, they're not asking much from us. Um, they already kind of use our facility already, so we wanted to make this official.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Um, just with that, well, uh, Chief Jones is up there. Is there any ability inside this MOU to work in some of our academic pieces, to have, uh, some of our different various departments being there, knowing that there's one thing that is at Pee Wee football practices for our parents, and there's one place they are definitely at, and I think we would be doing ourselves a disservice if we don't look into how do we put those spaces in there, in some of our other departments in front of our parents. They're gonna be there for a few hours.
We did talk about some opportunities to have, um, more orientations in, um, spaces where we can gather, um, some of those things that they need, um, on a regular basis. So we did discuss those things, um, up close, and we just have to do some coordination to make that happen.
Appreciate it, Benji. That is all. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I do have a request in the future. I know this is a change for our agenda, that MOUs are now coming under contracts, but can we still have the actual MOUs attached in our content for us to actually see what they're saying? Some of our questions may be answered by actually just being able to see the content of the MOU, just moving forward, if we can make that adjustment. Any other questions on contracts? Seeing nothing, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you. Dr. Jones, your next recommendation?
Thank you, Madam President. I recommend ratification of the following memorandum of understanding, uh, with OPSI Local 158, uh, Time Management Assistant, Kay White. Uh, we worked with Frost Brown Todd on this very closely, as well as, um, Ms. Marshall Rush, our, uh, union president for clericals.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Wick, second by Ms. Reinhardt. Any questions on the motion? Seeing nothing, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you. Dr. Jones, do you have any comments tonight?
First, I want to thank the team for being here, um, and we're really excited about, uh, getting, uh, the HVAC, BAC, uh, BAS, uh, systems, uh, upgraded, uh, in, uh, three of the schools. Uh, we're putting on some new roofs, um, and we're having fun collaborating with the academic side of the house. Uh, with all the programming and everything going on, we're still gonna be okay for the start of the year.
Thank you. I recommend the approval of the business manager contract. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Walker, second by Ms. Reinhardt. Any questions on the motion?
Uh, not a question, just a comment. I'd say I appreciate the work that Business Manager has been doing, but for the, the continued work, and just appreciate you and your team and the work that they have been doing, um, and highlighting some of the things that really play into the educational system, even though they are not in that space. So I like that, appreciate all the work and having the staff come out, being able to reach out if I have questions. I want to say, say that publicly, that I appreciate us moving forward with this and continue working with our Business Manager. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing nothing, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reinhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you. It's so much. If the board... Thank you. Inso much, if the Board of Education is committed to the continuing updating of its policies, rules, and regulations manual, and the committee, which was appointed, has been working towards that goal, following its broadest time for second reading and compliance with board file, GCBE, professional staff vacation and holidays, GCBD, paid time off for bereavement, personal days, and court reasons, GDVE, support staff vacation and holidays, JO, student records. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Board of Education, Dayton City School District, Montgomery County, Ohio hereby accept and adopt the following policies that have been codified for inclusion in the handbook of policy rules and regulations. I move that we adopt these policies. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Goodwin, second by Ms. Reiner. Any questions on the motion? Seeing nothing, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you. More comments. Mr. Smith?
Let me brief, and I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Spend a lot more on this world, a lot more on politically, and I just want us to be reminded that for a large number of our students, a lot of the things they see still do not greatly impact them in a way that changes the situation they're in. For a lot of our students, it doesn't matter if our president is Republican or Democrat, it doesn't matter if our House or Senate, Republican or Democrat, it doesn't matter. If most of these bills get passed or do not get passed, some of them are still living in poverty. Some of them are still living in neighborhoods that have been looked over and have been depleted of resources for decades. And so as we are out here, and there's so much momentum for all of the things that are going on in our country, I want us to always save space for those who are not out there on the front lines fighting, because the end of the day does not fully change what's going on in their households. And so that's why, for us at local level, we have to be mindful of those things, because for them, it does not truly matter what half the country is fighting for right now. A lot of those things do not have any impact on if they will have a meal on their table. It does not have an impact on them not having a stable family unit. And that is why a lot of the things that happen in this space are so important, because some of those other pieces are way above their heads. And that is not to make light of the things that are going on in our world right now, but it is to shed light on a real reality for a lot of our families in our community. It did not matter if Biden was the president, Trump was the president, Obama was president, Clinton was president. People in certain parts of our community have been in that space, and they have been in that station, and will remain in that station unless we do the things we need to do here, because one of the great changes that we can have in their lives is giving them a solid education and a foundation to get out of some of the systems of poverty that have plagued our communities. So that is all I want us to highlight, for me to highlight today, is that I appreciate all of the energy going on in the world, because I do think that voices need to be heard, but sometimes we have to lift up the voices and then give agency to the voice of the voiceless, who often just have to suffer in silence, because that has just been their station in life. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Reiner?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to bring a couple things to the attention of the public. There are two documents under my name for Board member comments that I thought might be of interest to a lot of community members. There are a couple pieces of legislation that are going through the Ohio State House right now that are incredibly damaging for our communities, not just our public schools, but our communities as a whole. The first is a joint letter from OASBO and OSBA in BASA regarding the amended substitute House Bill 96. There are some priorities there that they are strongly advocating for, and I'm sharing it because it's four or five pages long, and I'm not gonna read the whole thing out loud, but there are a few provisions and pieces of policy and funding pieces in that piece of legislation that are relevant to the health of public districts across the state, not just Dayton. The first is, this joint letter is urging lawmakers, particularly the Conference Committee, to prioritize funding for public education students in the budget. There are recommendations that the school board braces remain nonpartisan and not have party labels next to them. There are provisions that will impact the collective... They are asking the Conference Committee to consider the collective impact of property tax changes and how they will have an impact on Ohio students and maintain the ability for local communities to acquire the resources necessary to meet the needs of those students. They are strongly urging the cash carryover cap to be eliminated. It was first proposed at 25%, then it was raised to 30%, and then it was raised to 50%. We are asking for districts to be able to set their own policy regarding cash carryover cap. We know what is best for this district, and it is much more responsible to ask districts to set their own minimum and maximum cash carryover caps. We have had those policies on the books in Dayton Public for a number of years, and it has worked really well for us, and we would like to continue having local control and be able to set those minimums and maximums for our district as we see fit. And if voters disagree with those minimums and maximums, they can reflect those choices at the ballot box at the local level. And so I urge voters to read that first joint letter. The second is regarding House Bill 335. There was a fantastic webinar that I attended yesterday, and we heard from a few experts. One was Dr. Howard Fleeter, and he wrote this, this second document from the Ohio Education Policy Institute, and he broke down House Bill 335. This is a bill that will affect not just public schools and public districts, but it will affect police, it will affect parks, it will affect fire departments, it will affect municipal administrations in a really, really direct way. This will be devastating for the way that our cities and our schools and our communities function. It is a complete rewriting of more than 50 years of Ohio tax code. We all know that property values have been rising drastically, and with the rising property values comes rising property taxes. It has hit a lot of people in Ohio really hard, and there are calls for the Ohio State House to address the way that those property taxes have risen so sharply for a lot of residents and voters. There are some really great solutions out there. We're not finding a lot of those in House Bill 335. I'm not a tax expert. There were, I did some digging down a rabbit hole yesterday about some of the circuit breakers that are involved in other states that can help alleviate the pain of very fast rising property value, property taxes. But House Bill 335, and I'm quoting here, is the most comprehensive change to Ohio's property tax system in nearly 50 years. This will, this is proposing to eliminate the inside millage tax. And because the 10 mills of inside millage are specifically articulated in the state constitution, people have not really worried about this for some time, but the supporters of House Bill 335 are challenging that, and they're fundamentally changing the way that taxes are collected and the way outside and inside millage taxes are collected. Just so you know, this, this document that is listed under my name is trying to illustrate how this will impact districts across the state. One of the most direct ways to demonstrate how this will impact districts and have deep, deep cuts to school funding is to estimate the number of teachers that would need to be cut from each district, and it's broken down into a couple different typology groups. There's poor rural, there's rural, there's small town, there's poor small town, suburban, wealthy suburban, urban, major urban. I'm assuming we are urban and not major urban, is that correct? Or major urban, because we're...
Major urban.
We're major urban. So, under this proposed piece of legislation, the percent of teaching positions that would need to be eliminated to meet these cuts are 14.3%. Let that sink in, what that means for Dayton. For small towns, 23.3%. What kind of, what kind of communities, communities do we want? What kind of schools do we want? Do we want vibrant communities with strong schools and parks and fire departments? If we do, we have to be willing to fund them. I know that's an unpopular opinion in some circles. I'm willing to fund a community that is thriving and strong and meets the needs of every single person in that community. 90% of children in Ohio choose and attend public schools. This is good for everybody. Even if I didn't have children, which I do, who attend Dayton Public Schools, I would want a strong and consistently funded school system for everybody. This makes everybody's lives better. We have to look at ourselves when we vote at the ballot box and ask ourselves, are we willing to vote to fund the community that we want? I'm yelling, I don't care. I feel very strongly about this, and it's not just about schools, it's about the way that we live. I had the opportunity a few weeks ago to attend a presentation from the director of a unnamed but very large new private school in the area. And the director of the school gave a great presentation about how, when he went to school, he sat in a room of 30 desks that all faced the front, and the teacher taught one thing to 30 kids, and he knew that that wasn't the right way to teach kids. And what he wanted to have was a classroom that gave each child an individualized attention and the ability to be self-directed and independent. And it was a great presentation. There was no mention of test scores or metrics by which he could measure against Dayton Public why they were actually doing better, and I know for a fact that the school across the river from that school is doing exactly what he was bragging about. And he said, the kicker, that the cost to do this per pupil expenditure was $32,000 a year. Treasurer, what is our per pupil expenditure at Dayton Public Schools?
$17,000.
$17,000. He knows that it takes $32,000 to do this. And I asked him at the end of this presentation, do you still feel that $32,000 is what it will take to adequately educate children who are growing up in poverty? And if you do, at a time of historic defunding of public education in the State House, are you advocating for each district to get those resources? The answer is no. I'll tell you, I believe in public schools. I believe in public parks. I believe in public fire departments. I strongly oppose House Bill 335. I would urge everybody watching this to read the two documents under my name, contact your legislators, and let's fund our communities. That is all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Thank you. I will echo my colleague, and last week I did film a promo video with other school board members for All in Ohio, and that is out. And then next Wednesday at 1:30, there is a rally for fair school funding at the State House, and on top of the current budget that is being debated with four Republicans and two Democrats, we have several House bills and several Senate bills. I mean, these are individuals who really know nothing about education, who are trying to decide things. I mean, one bill is Ten Commandments designated as historical display material inside of schools, or adjusting kindergarten age requirements. I mean, there's so many, but just hope that you remember who is actually for schools' public education at the ballot box, who actually puts their children into public schools, and who actually speaks up for public education. Thank you all for coming out tonight, and hopefully you enjoy the rest of the month of June, and we'll see you back in July.
Ms. Wick?
Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues this evening, who provide such thoughtful words as we close the meeting. Thank you to our leadership. What I see is a strong engaged board. What I see is a strong, engaged team of administrative leaders. Thank you, Treasurer. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Business Manager. I hope everybody enjoys July. It's gonna go really fast, and we're gonna be exciting, we're gonna be starting an exciting new school year, and I look forward to all the opportunities that are approaching us. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Dr. Bailey?
Yeah, first, I want to offer my condolences to those in Minnesota, for those state representatives who were killed. Please keep their families in your prayers. Congratulations, Dr. Jones, for signing your contract. Looking for even more work from you, or harder work from you, so looking for the changes in your department. Thank you for all the comments from the, from the board members. That's all I have.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to one of our staffers, teacher, Ms. Pedersen, I believe, that's her name, for doing our lights tonight, because if you guys haven't been on this driver's stage, this is a whole thing outside of us, so we do appreciate you coming out and doing this for us tonight. Thank you to everyone who came out tonight, who isn't on the paid staff here. It's really always great to see individuals from the community, because we don't necessarily need to engage with you as a form of board in this way, which is why we're on a summer tour this summer. So thank you all for coming out. Shout out to our team. I'm hearing nothing but great things about the summer camps that are happening, going on. There are a lot of parents and caregivers that are excited that they get to keep moving their kids back to the school during this period. The only complaint that I have heard is they wish they were all summer long, so I do appreciate that people are taking full advantage of everything we have going on academically and athletically. I want to say, just to echo some of the comments I've heard up here tonight, I'm not sure if any of you guys got to see the rally that was in Dayton this past weekend, but it is a great illustration of the No Kings Rally. It's a great illustration of how everyday people are getting together, and they are bringing a collective thought of what they believe should happen in this community and around the, and around the world, and it gives hope to some of the things, again, that there is a lot that is happening that I don't necessarily agree with in the world right now, but the beautiful part of being American and being a part of this democracy is that we always have the power of the ballot. And I encourage anyone who watches any of these school board meetings, if you take nothing else from us, please register to vote. In addition to registering to vote, please vote in the upcoming election and every election after that, because everything that Board Member Reiner and Mr. Walker are stating, it is very difficult to overcome these things without voters and without active voters and without individuals who, even if you don't know what's going on, there is someone that can break it down enough for you to be able to be engaged in the conversation and make a decision by voting in every election, because we need you, not just this school board, but in this country. We need you. I do want to say, I think we have come a long way. This is the end of the school, this is actually the end. When we come back to you guys on the next broadcast, we will be at the start of our next school year at that point. And in the short time that I've been on the board, we've done some really great work here, guys. We are ending, as always, better than we started the year, and we had a lot of really good success. Our PIO team, thank you guys for putting out the highlights from graduation. If you had a child graduate this year and you don't know, the videos are up, so you can go and get that and screenshot that moment and record, video record your child being crawled across the stage and hold on to that forever. I would grab it now before it gets deep into the U2 page, so definitely take advantage of that. And other than that, thank you to the staff and everyone who came out tonight. Again, it's great that it's only 6:07, and we are about to wrap up, so I do appreciate, you know, appreciate you guys on that one. So with that one, I will say, pursuant to Section 121.22G of the Ohio Revised Code, I move that this board goes into executive session. This meeting is being held to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal of a public employee. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Goodwin, second by Ms. Reiner. Any questions on the motion? Seeing nothing, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you. Thank you all.